At the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place an item on the floor. Motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented at which time the public may participate and roll call vote well follow. We're calling our meeting to order at 9:05. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please. Call the roll, please.
Thompson.
Present.
Button.
Present.
Slawcik.
Here.
Okay. Item number four on our agenda this morning is approval or amendment of the agenda. I'll entertain motions for either approval or amending of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. Any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Item five on our agenda this morning is the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes of regular session of June 8th, 2021. We will be approving claims as audited and authorize the county auditor and recorder to issue payment of the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the month of June will be published as part of the first meeting in July. File district court report, May 2021, general supplemental fund surcharge of 53889. Item D, receipt of construction permit application for Edler Brothers, number 58297, U-Bank site, 1507 220th Street, State Center. Item E, file maneuver management plans. Jared Whitaker, number 70163, at 1458 180th Street Clemens, no changes were made. Justin Whitaker, number 66798, at 1775 Benford Avenue, State Center, no changes were made. MTM Farms LC, number 61010, at 3016 Marsh Avenue, Haverhill, no changes were made. And finally, Tamco Park, 2 LLC, number 58267, 3079 310th Street Gilman, no changes were made. I'll entertain motions to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Item six on our agenda this morning is to approve the mobile van shell rental agreement with Octemberfest Incorporated, now 9/24 through 9/26 2021. I'll entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the mobile van shell rental agreement with Octemberfest Inc. for 9/24, 9/26 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Sherry, did we receive a check with this agreement?
Yes, we did. It was complete.
Then everything is in order. This is fantastic. Octemberfest is going to be back downtown and we're going to be getting a little bit life back to normal. If there's no further discussion on this item, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven on our agenda this morning is to approve the new hire, Chase Dobson, jailer for the Sheriff's Department, starting date of 6/23/2021, full-time permanent at $19.41 an hour. I'll entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the hire, new hire of Chase Dobson, jailer, Sheriff's Department, start date at 6/23/2021, full-time permanent, $19.41 per hour.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Sheriff, do you have any comments on this before we vote?
Yes, making sure that it's clear this is a replacement hire for Green House Rodriguez. So this will be a replacement hire.
Okay. If there's no further comments or discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Item eight on our agenda this morning is approval of the contract with First On-Site of Freeport, Illinois for Marshall County Courthouse Interior Project. The sum of the contract is $2,624,420.22. This involves substantial completion of Phase 1 by 9/21/21 and Phase 2 by 12/31/2021 with a 5% retainage. I'll entertain motions in a second on this item to get it on the table for discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the contract with First On-Site.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion?
I wanted to bring up, Dave, this contract came in pretty late. I know, I don't think you probably all had time to review it again after the edits had been made. If we do, if you do want to table it until a later meeting, we maybe could have a special to do so. This has been reviewed and it was started by our architect, Scott Allen, with OPN. And Jordan Gaffney has reviewed it. It's actually went back and forth a few times between them and Lucas and I. I've still got three items that I've got questions on, on how the wording is, but they're very small changes.
Will there be substantive changes that would affect the contract?
No, no, it isn't. They've got a date in there on June 7th, and if we haven't approved it yet, I was wondering why the date was filled in. They've got you listed as change order contact, which I think should be Lucas and myself.
Absolutely.
But if it is you, they've got your wrong email address. So we've got to fix something, I guess. So if it's, but it's just some, just minor little things.
If we do, if we do that, we'd have to do it the first part next week.
Yes.
Because it still has to be done in June, right? Or does it matter?
That really doesn't matter. It's more than getting it to First On-Site. Our goal was to have you all approve it prior to taking this back to First On-Site.
I think that for sure the date has to be changed. And then you and Lucas' names put in.
Put in there. And we were in there in another spot, but there's these two other spots that we missed.
Well, if we table this today and bring it up later.
It just, it holds things up, but.
Can we pass it pending?
Changes.
Those changes.
I think so, yes. I think so. We wouldn't obviously have Dave sign until we've got all those changes made, discussed it with Scott, and you all have reviewed it again.
Sherry, did you catch those changes we were talking about there?
Yes, and I've seen the emails, so I'm.
She's been on the email chain some, so.
Okay, okay.
Representative changes, the date of the contract starts.
Yeah, there's, and the date isn't, where the signature is, the date is open, but inside the contract, there's June 7th filled in for some reason. And I'm guessing that's just kind of an auto fill thing when Scott was updating it.
Oh, okay. So this came from Scott, actually?
Yes, this is from Scott Allen with OPN. This AIA contract that you use for all construction things is an architect's, it comes from the Architect Association, so that's where it originates. Look at all the, you know, the construction stuff I'm learning.
I would personally recommend that we approve it with the following changes that have already been discussed, so that we don't hold this up anymore.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yes. Do we need to change the motion then?
Are you amenable to amending your motion to the, to approve it with the amendments as discussed?
Absolutely, yes. And the second would also include.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the amendments as discussed. Any further discussion on this item? Lucas, do you want to chime in at all?
Lucas is up watching the statues go up on the courthouse. He sent me some pictures.
Oh, I'm missing it.
Oh, have video. He's capturing the moment, but yes, they're finally getting it done. It was supposed to be, I think, three weeks ago. Every Monday, they said they were going up on Monday.
Oh, wonderful.
Not a Monday.
I'm tickled they're going up. I'm sad that I'm missing it, but that's neither here nor there. We have a motion and a second to approve as amendment for the first onsite contract. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number nine on our agenda this morning is to approve the liquor license for West Marshall Golf Courts Association, doing business as Lincoln Valley Golf Class C Liquor License, LC 0110945, with a tentative effective date of 6/30/2021 and an expiration date of 6/30/2022. I'm going to take the rare opportunity that chair does not make motions or seconds. Steve, would you motion this, please?
Yes, I would. I would make a move to approve the liquor license for West Marshall Golf Course Association.
I will second that. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Button. Yes.
Item 10 on our agenda this morning is the transfer of funds. Transfer number 918, which is a quarterly transfer of no more than $670,000 from Rural Services Fund to the Secondary Road Fund, but not to exceed the maximum transfer yet to be above the minimum transfer amount required by Iowa Code 331.429 subsection B. Also, transfer number 919, which is an annual transfer from lost revenue in the Rural Services Fund to the Secondary Road Fund in the amount of $770,690.18. Transfer number 920 is an annual transfer totaling no more than $3,605,3,605.04 from the County Attorney Collection Incentive Fund to the General Basic Fund for the County Attorney Office Plaining Expense. Transfer number 921 is a one-time transfer from Capital Projects ARPA Recovery Fund in the amount of $3,823,483.50. I'll entertain motions on these transfers.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the transfers of funds, number 918, 919, 920, and 921.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these transfers. Any further discussion or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say that transfer 921 was our American Rescue Plan funding that came in June 1st. We didn't have any guidance at that time from the state of Iowa. They're now saying they want to put it in a special revenue fund, and that's why it's being moved. We wanted it moved by June 30th, so it was in the appropriate account for our audit that will be coming up. We did discuss this with Beth Miller, and that's where she wanted it as well. So we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and we'll get it there before the end of the year.
And hopefully they don't change the rules on this next week.
They could. I don't, they've been talking about this for four months, and then they just decided to tell us where to put it after a lot of people had it.
Okay. That's a long line.
I wanted to say.
We have a motion and a second to approve these transfers. Any further discussion or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Item number 11 this morning is to adopt resolution number 2021-0025, approving the appointment of Jessica Chezick to the position of Assistant Auditor and Recorder/Assistant Commissioner of Elections in the Office of the County Auditor Recorder. I'll entertain motions on this resolution, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve resolution 2021-0025, approving appointment of Jessica Chezick to the position of Assistant Auditor and Recorder, Assistant Commissioner of Elections in the Office of the County Auditor Recorder.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Could we change that to adopt, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 2021-0025, approving the appointment of Jessica Chezick to the position of Assistant Auditor and Recorder, Assistant Commissioner of Elections in the Office of the County Auditor Recorder. Further being any further discussion?
I do want to point out that it's effective July 5th. Cindy, and it has that on the prior page, so we just had a bad page break there. This is due to Cindy Reitzel's retirement. Her last day in the office is July 2nd. So I wanted to have this appointment done ahead of time so that she can take care of anything, because the Assistant Auditor Recorders can also sign in my absence, and I am on vacation that week, so I wanted to make sure the appointment was done before I left.
Jessica's been with us for quite a while.
She's been here six years, and she's worked in elections that entire time, as well as she's been the vitals and DNR lead. She's been the vitals lead since she got here.
And she helps us out when, when.
When Sherry is gone, she's the backup for that position as well. She wondered if she was going to get rid of that, and I said, no.
I'm happy to see her get this position.
Yes, yes. We're learning.
I would congratulate them both, one on the position and one on the retirement. Any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number 12 this morning is our annual adoption of the funds for the appropriation. This is resolution number 2021-0026, appropriation of funds for fiscal year 2021-2022, whereas it is desired to make appropriations for each of the different offices and departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, in accordance with section 331.434 subsection 6, the Code of Iowa. Now let it therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors in Marshall County is appropriating the funds as follows. I'm not going to read the list, I'll just give you the total. It comes to $31,966,840. It does list all of the departments. I'll entertain motions on this resolution, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt resolution 2021-0026, appropriation of funds, FY 2021-22.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve. Any further discussion or comments?
I just want to point out that this resolution and the next one are just our standard annual to start our new year resolutions. So just bookkeeping and taking care of dotting our i's and crossing our t's so the accounting office can function.
Yeah, we're adopting, though, right?
We're adopting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13 on our agenda this morning is also to adopt the resolution number 2021-0027. This is advanced issuance of payments for fiscal year 2021-2022. This is also bookkeeping, allowing the Auditors and Recorders Office to pay reoccurring bills on a basis before we have a meeting. I'll entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-0027, advanced issuance of payment for fiscal year 2021-22.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14 on our agenda this morning is the adopt the resolution number 2021-0028, abatement of real estate and mobile home taxes. Whereas pursuant to chapter 445.16, Code of Iowa, the county treasurer has the authority determined when it is impractical to pursue collection of property taxes through tax sale or lawsuit. Whereupon making this determination, the county treasurer shall provide a recommendation of abatement to the Board of Supervisors, and the board shall abate the following taxes. Jarrett, you want to speak on this before we do our motions?
Good morning. Well, we got, you'll see, four parcels of real estate and then several mobile homes. The real estate, the city of Gliscombe took that 109 Dubuque Street, it's abandoned junk property they've been dealing with for several years, so they took that over. $93.87 of that is county tax dollars that we're abating. The 101 West Main Street, 102 through 104 West Main Street, and 406 West Lynn Street, all in Marshawn. Those all fall under the 657 A10B subsection 5 for the city of Marshawn that they took deed through this, through the court proceedings. Therefore, in that subsection 5, it's come spring clear of taxes. So those were just recently awarded to them through the court proceedings. And so $425, $425, $592, and 114 of that is county tax dollars. So of those, real estate, $1,225.57 is the county portion we're abating. Therefore, you're seeing all the rest of it's the other entities, but a lot of that is just penalty and interest wrapped up that you're seeing on those. As for the mobile homes, we're doing our typical mobile home cleanup of ones that have on file that aren't there anymore. But you'll also notice that there's several of the Melbourne mobile homes that are on there. If you haven't been out to Melbourne lately, the wonderful town that it is, the COOP took over that mobile home park. And so there was a lot of junk old mobile homes that they had to take on to then junk and get rid of. And so all of those ended up being junked and are gone. So that's where those end up having, that's why we have that abatement on all those Melbourne mobile homes, and then the others are just ones that aren't in the parks anymore. Questions? I think the last thing to note is, thanks to Hartman COOP, and I know the people in Melbourne really appreciate them for taking on that mobile home park and cleaning it completely up. It's really, really a nice thing for the town of Melbourne.
It'll put them right on top. Okay, I'll entertain motions on this resolution. If there's no further discussion or questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt resolution 2021-2028, abatement of real estate and mobile home taxes for real estate abatement of $9,830, and a mobile home abatement of $4,750.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt resolution 2021-2028. Enter further discussion or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number 15 on our agenda this morning is the adoption of resolution 2021-0029. This is a resolution to the establishment of the Fund for the American Rescue Plan, also formerly also known as ARPA Fund. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund was established by the Department of the United States Treasurer under the American Rescue Plan. And whereas Marshall County allocation from the state local fiscal recovery fund is $7,646,967,000, Marshall County desires the following suggested practice by the Iowa Department of Management in consultation with the auditor of the state in reporting activities regarding this allocation as a special fund. Therefore, it be resolved that a new special fund revenue be established, the ARPA Recovery Fund. I'll entertain motions on this resolution, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-0029, resolution to establish the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
I jumped in.
No, you're fine, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-0029. Any further discussions or comments?
This is again dotting our i's and crossing our t's, since this is a brand-new fund that they wanted us to create. We had to, by resolution, create it.
Okay.
We're under the impression, been under the impression that was 7.8?
We get half this year, and we will get half next year.
Okay.
So it'll be two payments coming.
The actual final number that is 7.6 million.
Seven, yeah, 7.8. Well, maybe it is 7.6. Let me divide that by two and see what we received. Yeah, that would be right.
3.9.
3.8 equals 7.6.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Slawcik.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 16 on our agenda is receipt of a petition for road improvement at Wolf Lake. This is for discussion only. I understand we have some gentlemen here this morning that would like to speak to this item.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. I'm here this morning with Mike Poe and myself and Kurt Hoffmeister. We're residents at the Wolf Lake Edition. That's south of Marshalltown, across Highway 30, off Smith Avenue. And specifically, we're requesting that the county take some action to not just repair, but consider replacing the roads in Wolf Lake Edition. This would be County Road Jefferson Drive, Pickering Drive, Rockton Drive, and Malta Way, specifically the intersections between some of those roads. But the roads in general are concrete segments installed originally in the early mid 60s. So pretty much every segment, the seam down the middle of the road and the seams across the road between segments are all deteriorating, and pretty much every one has been patched or needs patched at this point in time. They're deteriorating to the point that some of the larger concrete segments are breaking up within the segment, not just across the seams. So this petition was signed by most of the residents at Wolf Lake, and in the interest of time, we certainly.
Somebody put us on mute.
We could have collected twice as many signatures, but we didn't want to go to friends and family and visitors. We often receive comments from our mail carrier and our garbage collector and anyone else doing services out there, how rough the roads are. Residents out there have complained to myself as a Lake Association board member that they're getting car damage, tire damage, wheel damage. The families with younger kids are complaining that it's not safe to ride bikes out there. The cracks in the concrete are that bad. I encourage you to drive through and see what I mean. At the same time, roughly half the residents are elderly and walking on the roads. There are no sidewalks, walking on the roads in the evenings and mornings. You have to pay attention to where you're walking. Not only is the road breaking up, but a lot of the culverts are collapsing or some have eroded and holes are opening on the side of the road where a couple of the culverts cross under and drain into the lake there. So that's our petition. I'd be glad to answer any questions. So that's, uh, that's our petition. I'd be glad to ask or answer any questions. We've heard about a ten-year plan. We've certainly seen some asphalt patching, but it's really spotty at best and nowhere near the number of, uh, large cracks are being, uh, being filled. It's just a handful of things kind of on the entrance road to the subdivision.
Couple of questions then, Kurt. Uh, how many people are, are in that whole vicinity? Not just on your petition, but how many people total?
Yes, um, so total, I think it's on the order of fifty-seven homes, uh, would be affected, who acts, who have to drive those county roads to access their homes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so one of the comments that's struck me near and dear, I've lived there five or six years now, is I've seen property taxes go up, but to me, the road condition is deteriorating faster. I think it's impacting property values, uh, because of the road condition out there reaching that point.
How many miles of road do you think are, is bad? Four?
There's, there's point nine, there's nine tenths of a mile paved out there. And then there's three tenths of a mile that's wrong, that if we go in there to do improvements, I would not want to leave three tenths of a mile of rock and everything. And there's also the little puzzle of the end of Malta where there's houses that don't actually have a road in front of them. And I would think that the Lake Association would want to solve that puzzle too at some point, but because that, because then you could pave Malta all the way and actually get access to those last, is it two or three properties on the end?
Uh, there's two properties. The third one has about fifteen feet of county maintenance to access the very corner of the property.
So maybe a mile and a half?
A mile point two if we, as far as the project.
We've been out there before, you and I.
Yeah.
Uh, we met with you about a year or two ago.
Yes.
And, uh, and it is, it's, it's not good. Uh, and you've been trying to keep things patched up as well as possible.
It's Band-Aids. I mean, at this point, we're just trying to, to limp it along until we can do something. And I've, I've, I've mentioned it to you guys, you know, before that it's a, the, the puzzle that's tough is the funding side of it because it's local roads, which means we have to spend Marshall County money. Spend our farm-to-market money on it. We can't spend any federal aid on it. It's, it has to be local Marshall County money and that's, you know, only maybe about a quarter of my budget is, is the, is local funding. Comes from road use tax funding and comes from, um, local option sales tax, which is just structures, you know, is culverts and bridges at this point. So it's the, the funding mechanism is the tough part, you know, and it's going to be, it's going to be more economical to go in and do the whole thing than it would be to go in and do a quarter of it, a quarter of it, you know, in four separate years.
But I think the worst right now is the intersection of Jefferson and Rockton. Uh, that intersection, uh, is completely broken up and more patched than pavement. But also that's where it immediately goes to the short section of gravel. And so driving, there's drainage problems across there and, and driving from the pavement to the gravel, uh, the gravel immediately starts to rut and pot, uh, potholes develop right off of the pavement access. So that, that's the one that's probably the most generous, dangerous and the most broken up. Um, but it's throughout all those roads where the seams are coming apart, deteriorating, and the seams are moving as well.
Paul, would you please explain to everybody why we can't just grind this up and turn it all back to a ground, you know, or surface?
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, it's, as a rock surface, it wouldn't even be maintainable because there's very steep grades out there. The road, there's, you know, the hills and different, you know, just the topography of that area. Even if we could turn it back into rock without being killed, it wouldn't make any sense because we would be out there maintaining and rocking it constantly. And it would, it would actually cost us more to maintain it as a rock road than it would as a paper.
Do you have anything on the five-year plan for that area at this point?
No, and that's just because we have no real local funding for local paving. We've got several of these types of situations where we're going to have to use local paving for. Um, anything we do in Green Mountain is going to be our road, local paving. And there's several other areas that are residential, that are residential areas that are like dead end roads or short stretches where, where it justifies paving just because of the residential traffic. And, and we just, in the past, our local paving money has just been for making repairs to our pavement that we do with, you know, as far as crack filling, crack sealing and, uh, and filling of ruts, you know, with the slurry leveling. And that's what we've spent our local money on in the past. So it, it is going to mean to plan something like this is going to be a different, a different budget strategy for the department. If, you know, and I, I'd like to put numbers on it, but right now with the, the way things are going, everything's going to the moon for costs with materials and it's, it'd be pure guesswork, but I, I think a million dollars would get most of it.
Now, would it, there be regrading in this one also then?
There's not much chance for regrading there and, and there's places where it would justify regrading, but there are so many paved residential driveways that if you end up changing the grade much at all, you end up having to tear out everybody's driveway and regrade their entire front yard and that, and there's places where the houses are close enough to the road that that's not feasible either. So really. You know, we really have to, the, this is the Rockton Pickering, the Rockton Jefferson intersection that he was talking about. Um, there's, there's just, it really needs to be a complete removal and replacement of the pavement. And, and I, I think it's a spot where Portland cement concrete, which is what's there, would, would work fine, but the problem is the cure on that. And I've always been an asphalt guy and I would, you know, I'd look at costs on both sides, but if we replace it with asphalt, once we get in there, the mix is cool. They can drive on it. We go in there and do Portland cement concrete, there's going to be places where it's going to be five days. They can't use the road, you know, and, and with residential, there's places where you can, you know, as long as you're not on a dead end, you can work around that, that constraint.
Yeah.
But there's, you know, there's residents where walking, you know, four hundred feet to their house might not be something that's really feasible.
Do we know for sure that we can't use this recovery mon, this recovery money that we've got coming for this kind of a project?
We can. So the ARPA funds, if we can show revenue lost, the revenue lost funds can be used for any expense that is a legitimate county expense.
We, we would be pushing the envelope on it. Pushing the envelope.
No, this would be, I'm talking, sending you all on a cruise is not a legitimate county expense. So this would be, yeah, roads and bridges are something I'm hearing a lot of counties talk about with their lost revenue. So I'm sure you're thinking, okay, so how much lost revenue do we have? They're still working on the mechanics of that calculation.
Keep in mind, we're also going to have lost revenue when the state backs off of the commercial backfill.
Um, we will. It is also a multiple year thing. So we can calculate the lost revenue as of June thirty twenty-one, June thirty twenty-two, June thirty twenty, twenty-three.
I think it goes to December twenty-four.
It goes to December twenty-four, so we could even do a calculation there June thirtieth of twenty-four. The kicker on.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. The kicker on this is that you have to have your funds committed by December thirty-one of twenty-four. And that might be pretty hard to do if we wait till we can do the calculation of June thirty twenty-four. Not to say you can't.
Paul, who originally put these roads in?
Who? You mean like contractor or do you mean?
Was it the county or was it the sub, subdivision?
I have any of the records that I've not really researched that far back in it. I mean, I probably do have files somewhere.
Yeah, because this, this was done before we had a subdivision ordinance that required the subdivision to pay for their roads.
Correct. And it also was done before we had the ordinance that would require certain grades and certain, you know, you know, the, the factors of the, of the road grade that are in, that's in the subdivision.
Kurt, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I was going to say, my understanding is that they were paved in the, uh, mid-sixties for the reason you mentioned earlier, there's a couple substantial grades. Um, so paving seemed to be the best thing, but I think the family that developed the subdivision did, did the road work at that time and then it was later given over to the county.
Because of the Wolf family?
Yeah. That's the legend, is that how it happened.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate you guys coming and talking to us about this. Um, this is going to take a little strategy on our part.
So you're right. Something needs to be done there. Um, you're, we're serving a hundred and fifty people probably in this division of the subdivision. Yeah.
Probably on, on that order, um, what Paul mentioned, the, these two houses here on the southeast corner of the lake, um, that roadway belongs to Lake Owners Association. I don't think we'd have a problem turning it over to the county, but, um, the owners there are concerned about how much of their yard they would have to give up to have a county graded, uh, road run across their property there. Um, and then it's the southwest side of the lake that's, uh, currently unpaid. Uh, coming from that intersection, um, where she has the cursor just above there is Rockton and Jefferson. From that point on, it's, uh, unpaid, but the very last part again belongs to Lake Owner Association. There's no home fronting this very southernmost section from that last driveway, uh, down to the dam. That's, uh, maybe a third of that is county maintenance and then from there on it's, uh, Lake Owner Association.
And that's what you would want to pave, Paul?
No, that to get all of the residences on pavement because that, what that does is get the county from ever having to drag a maintainer in there to do, you know, to degrade up the rock.
Yeah.
So right now there's a couple orphan pieces of rock that we just try to avoid that from the maintenance strategy.
Hey, what's, you know, when you're looking at this map, speaking of, when you're looking at this map, right here, there's a culvert that goes over there. There's a huge hole developing there. Somebody falls in there, it'll be a lawsuit. You know, I have asked the county engineer.
Is the hole in the fourth slope of the, where's the hole at?
The hole's in the culvert, right on the grass. Where's the, there's the culvert. It's right on the grass. If somebody's walking there, that's hidden by the grass. I didn't even know it was there until a neighbor pointed it out to me. You just walk in there. They're going down. They're going down the full length of that culvert to the ground. Every one of these two things is, are, are breaking up. The one you did last, it was last year, year before?
Number two.
The culvert you put in, you busted up even more concrete. Even more concrete was broken up in front of Ferguson's place, um, Rockton there and, did even more damage when you put in that culvert. Every culvert out there is, is metal and, and they're all rotten. All they need holding together is the concrete. You know, it really torqued me and a lot of people, you know, people, I took this petition out and people were grabbing it out of my hands. Where do I sign? A lot of them didn't want to put comments down. They said they want, you guys wouldn't want to read their comments on the streets out there. But I'm told the farmers, the gravel roads for the farmers are more important than Wolf Lake because they pay a lot of taxes. How much does that farm a paper, an acre compared to what we pay per acre? Our, our, our taxes are going up. Our properties are depreciating largely, largely because of that road. Because of the streets out there. Now, you want to start lowering taxes until you get it fixed? I don't think so because you want to put it somewhere else. Nothing, and your patch jobs out there is a laughing joke. People watch you guys do patch jobs. There's this much crud in the bottom of the hole. Nobody cleans out those holes. They just slap it in, smack it a couple times and on they go. La, and last no time at all.
Yeah, even, even the hot mix after a week or two starts coming out of the cracks because they're not preparing the.
People that break up their vehicles want to ask, well, do you guys want to pay until you guys get it fixed? Do you want to pay for the damages to these vehicles? You can send us all the bit, my con, the comment was, you can send us all the bills you want. We're not going to pay them. That's the comment. People get hurt out there, like, like, little bikes and stuff. Send us your bills. We're not going to pay them.
Are you talking about our conversation?
About our conversation.
Because you're not exactly recalling me correctly.
I think I am.
On the vehicle damage, I said, you can send a bill. We'll send it to our insurance company.
No, you did not say that.
Yes, I did.
You said, you said, send us all the bills you want. We're not going to pay it.
I don't have it on recording, so I can't really say anything about it. It was just you and I there. But I also didn't talk about importance. I talked about funding eligibility for the road.
Get it done.
The, the, the rock roads that, that serve agriculture have different funding eligibility.
When you guys get, when you guys are out there gravel, gravel roads and grading them every single day and you come out, only when we gripe about it, to do a pat, a meteoric patch job or, or finally put some gravel down with the thing. Uh, somebody says, my God, Paul, there was a gra, there was a grave round here the other day. Right, you know, when was the last time you've seen that? We're on the back, 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 back. There's enough, there's enough. We can't wait till twenty twenty-four. People out there are just, they're just going nuts. Garbage man, my garbage man, I says, you want to sign this? He says, yeah. He says, I won't put down anything because he says they won't want to read it. And a lot of the blacks are the same way. And we didn't get everybody out there because people on vacations. People, one of their friends that come out, they're excited. They want to, they say, oh, I can have them come out. They'll, they'd be glad to sign it because they, they know the same thing. Stranger comes out there, they don't know where those holes are, where the, those ridges are. They're doomed. It needs to be done.
It's like a reverse speed bumps. It does slow down any traffic out there, but, uh, I think the roads are deteriorating at a faster and faster rate. If we don't get something planned soon, it's going to be much, much worse. What the, the efforts to patch or, or, or do minor repairs are going to exceed, uh, the investment of just replacing the roads at some point.
And my taxes have gone from five hundred dollars a year when I moved out there to four topless or four times that and the roads are going down, 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 down. Why is my taxes going? What am I paying for?
Sir, if you look at your property tax statement, you'll notice that your taxes are increasing and it's not because of the county. It's because of the school system, the community college and everything else. The county portion of your property taxes have been very, very tiny increases for the last eleven years.
Property values are going down because of the streets. Not look at a house, they look at that street.
Anything else on this item this morning, folks?
I, uh, that's it for me.
Yeah, we, thank you for coming. And this will give us, this will give us, uh, some basis to work on here. So.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of people wanting to be here today, but because of the limitations, you know, we couldn't bring the people.
Yeah, I, I think you've represented their ideas quite well. So appreciate that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to our next agenda item. We're going to move on to item seventeen on our agenda this morning. This is for presentation and funding request for the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center slash Fisher Community Center. This is a discussion only. I know we've got some folks here that want to give this presentation and let's look forward to it.
Oh, thank you, Dave, and, uh, thanks for having us this morning. Those who are all here. My name is Mike Mason. With me is Karen Gregory, also a couple of other members from our team, Carol Hitts, who's the director of the Y, and Paul Gregory, uh, retired from Fisher Emerson. Karen is recently retired from, uh, Martha Island Thai Foundation Director and I've been retired from Fisher Emerson where I was for forty-three years. Anyway, uh, yeah, we, we are transitioning the Fisher Community Center to the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center, new name. And we are taking a sixty-plus year history facility and trying to reset it for the next thirty, fifty, sixty years into the future. It was nearing the end of its, uh, useful life and then we've had a couple of, uh, weather-related instances in the last two, three years. And, uh, particularly last August, the deratio took this facility to a condition where it was unusable. And, uh, we've had a team of about twenty people working, uh, on both with the art collection and the facilities for the last, uh, four or five years pretty diligently. And then the last two years, we've had to really, uh, accelerate our actions and we want to, we can't tell you the sixty-plus year history, but we want to.
And we want to, we can't tell you the 60-plus year history, but we want to at least bring you up to date in the last few years and where we stand today and what the future looks like for us. And most importantly, we're going after state funding in the, to the tune of about $850,000 that we're eligible for based on the dimensions and type of project we have. And to receive those funds, we need to get also additional support from the community and the county. And that's why we're here to see you today. And it's a pretty exciting project. It's got a lot of widespread community leadership support. And Karen, I'll tell you a little bit more about it and then I'll wrap up and take any questions.
Thank you. Out of respect of your time, I'm not going to reiterate. I'm hoping that you were able to see the article or read the article in the newspaper.
Yes.
If not, you're more than welcome to take a look. So I'm not going to rehash a lot of those details. Thanks, dear. But I'm going to give you just a quick update. We have had all the asbestos removed from the building. That was, as I'm sure that you've run into things similar, but to the tune of $500,000. We've had the entire roof replaced and that is just shy of $700,000. Those two things have already been invested in this building. Most of it had, of those two expenses have been covered by insurance, but a substantial amount, well over $100,000 has not been. So, and right now we're negotiating with the insurance company against.
Been there.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So we're in the process of negotiating with them to come up with the payments that we need. We are making some significant improvements to this facility. That is going to be a huge economic advantage to not only Marshalltown, but Marshall County. We are expanding and I'm going to share with you a, sorry, Dave, I didn't know you were going to be online, sorry. Okay. So you'll see from the blueprint, some of the additions that we are doing. First of all, we, the old Fisher Community Center had three large conference rooms and one small conference room. We are expanding this to five conference rooms. And they will all be equipped with state-of-the-art equipment that people, we were working with MecDyne to make sure that there's going to be accessibility for people to have a much broader usage of that space. We are enhancing the auditorium. One of the things that we've done is, you may remember the auditorium had a stage. No one ever used it. So we, that is going to be a wall and that will become backstage for the theater, which is going to give the theater a lot more space. What it's also going to do is allow the theater to store their props and such in that area, which before they had no place to put them and so it limited the amount of public usage of that stage. And now we will have that extra space for the theater group to store their stuff in the back so we can use it for speakers and for presidential campaigns or what have you. So that is another enhancement. You will also notice that one of the old conference rooms that was adjacent to the auditorium is going to be converted into a large catering kitchen. This again is going to substantially increase the usage of this facility. Not for weddings or for events and conferences. In Marshalltown, one of the damages that we have in Marshall County is that we're centrally located. And having a facility like this with this many conference rooms, with the accessibility of the auditorium, the stage, the catering kitchen, we're going to be able to host more events and conferences here in Marshalltown, which is going to be a huge economic driver for not only the downtown businesses and districts, but for the whole of Marshall County. Another improvement that we are making, first of all, this is all like phase one. Phase two are huge improvements and renovations to the theater. We will be doing fundraising, this is phase two, this is in the future, but we're looking at like 4.5 million to make this theater something really spectacular. That's going to come in the future and we'll do the fundraising first and then be doing the building.
It's not 4.5 million for the theater in total.
Yeah, for the phase two it is, but right now we're carving out 1 million of that 4.5 to include in phase one. We decided this theater is in such rough shape that we needed to pour some resources into it now. But everything that we're doing now is complimentary to what we're going to be doing in the future. For instance, we've got to replace all the glass on the front of it. That glass will be repurposed with, you know, when we eventually do phase two. We're also adding, as you can see on this, the dark purple, those are, that's a buildout. That's the only exterior change to this building that you will see. But that is a buildout for handicap bathrooms. Right now, there are none in that facility. So those will be built in now. We will also redo all the bathrooms in the area down below the theater. So the total project, if you include the roof and the asbestos removal, is about a $6 million project. We've received a million dollar grant from the Martha Allen Ty Foundation and we of course are getting some insurance money, but it is far from anything that's going to pay for this whole project. But now's the time to do it. We've had to evacuate that entire building for the asbestos abatement. So I mean, really now is the time, if we're going to be making these improvements, to do them now. So the other point that I wanted to make was that a month before the deratio wiped out that building, the art collection was removed from the building a month. And we worked on preparing to have that collection removed because it's being restored for years before that. We raised over $200,000 to have that art restored. I can't tell you the dollar amount of the worth of that art, but if you think that it took 200,000 to just clean it up, I can leave to your imagination what the value of this art is. And that's going to be a huge driver for economic development in this community because people will come, we're going to get statewide, national. This is, this is a huge art collection. And folks, I knew nothing about impressionist art other than I knew what a Monet was before this, but what I have learned and the value and the value that other people have on coming to see something like this is tremendous. So this, and in order for us to do that, we've got to put this facility back in a position where it's going to be museum quality and that's what we're going after with this building. So with that said, I'm going to hand over the mic.
So the project has phases that Karen was talking about. And the funds that we're trying to pull together right now are to get us through the full renovation of the existing facilities. Bring them up to current code, current standards, fix all the things that were damaged. As you mentioned, remove the asbestos, become current code, particularly with access for handicap and bathroom facilities and so on. Well, that's all. The question of the, the project is, there's really three components to it. The theater, the community center, civic center with the reception hall, conferencing facilities, office spaces for community organizations, and then the art gallery and the art itself. So it's, there's really three big components to this. And we think the economic drivers are really the reception and meeting space capabilities and the art collection that has been kind of under wraps for many years. We want to open it up and let the public enjoy it. And we've seen outside of our community, in other states, other larger economic opportunities have been driven through similar kinds of collections. So we have that potential to do the same thing right here. So again, the, a big component of our funding is this community attraction tourism grant. And we're on our way, but you know, we've got real solid support from the city and we're looking for some additional help from the county. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
You said the magic word.
You said the magic word at the end. You said the word tourism.
Yeah.
That makes it eligible for our ARPA funds. Awesome. I kept waiting, I'm sitting there just listening, taking notes and going, come on, say it, say it, say the word.
Tourism.
Tourism, all capitals by the way.
It is, it is true that when we were looking for firms to help us with the architectural planning and what, where, how do we go from here and what do we do? We had firms from Chicago or Minneapolis, other large metropolitan areas that came in and they were astounded by what they found out about our art collection. And they were very enthusiastic about wanting to get involved. Not just for their business standpoint, but from the, their interest in the arts. And so it's a very real connection that people have with this.
Four-year facility, you mentioned convention type thing, which again, to me is tourism as well. What's, what kind of numbers, you know, what size of a conference could it accommodate? Are we 100 people?
I think the reception hall could handle in that, in that kind of sizing, yes, 100.
100.
Yeah, easily.
That's what I was thinking, you could do 100 and 150 and then have those break out.
With all the conferencing and reception hall and catering facilities and all of that, yeah. We could, you could easily have maybe upwards of 150.
I know and using that facility many, many times over the last 40 years, it's hard to hear in there for some reason. The ceiling is high and I'm sure you have been there and you realize this too. I just want to throw it out.
Thank you. We'll wind that into our program.
And we have talked about the acoustics of the auditorium.
Yeah, it's echoing.
We do have specialists in the audiovisual equipment area consulting with us. And we have our local facility, MecDyne, who's counseling us on some of the equipment. And they are looking to showcase their products there.
Mike, I got a couple of questions. I've attended many, many meetings over the last 35 years in this facility and many different organizations. And it was my understanding that any organization could have one meeting a month in any of the conference rooms at no charge. Will that, will that continue?
We still have that condition and we'll honor that into the future.
Okay. Secondly, do we have a long-term commitment from the wonderful gift of the Fisher family for keeping this art in our facility?
It's a great question.
Karen's probably in a better position to answer that, but they, they want the art to remain here. They want it to be housed in a proper gallery and they want the public to see it and use it. And it's the, it's the property of this community in a nutshell.
You know, Dave, that's really a good question. Bill Fisher donated that art to this community as well as the facility with the intention that this was going to be a real enhancement to our community and economic driver. And it was going to help to bring employees to the area, residents to the area knowing that we have this depth of art and respect for this type of an asset within our community. When we asked the family, well, how they felt about changing the name of the facility, they reiterated to me that again, it was Bill Fisher's intention to provide this facility to the advantage of Marshalltown. And if changing the name and recognizing Marshalltown in the name or whatever we do is going to further enhance Marshalltown, by all means do it. Now, there will be a Fisher, it will be the Fisher Art Museum that houses the art and we will have a Fisher Art Lounge within this facility that will talk about the history of Fisher and also provide information about impressionism and about the art pieces themselves. So we're maintaining that respect and integrity of the Fisher family and certainly the Martha Allen Ty Playhouse, her being the sister of Bill Fisher, will remain as well.
It pleases me to hear that. I'd like to have, continue to have that tie with the family.
It's the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center umbrella with the Fisher Collection Art Gallery, the Martha Allen Ty Playhouse and the Civic Center facilities for meeting and offices and so forth.
Are you going to get your previous tenants back?
The Chamber of Commerce notified us, oh gosh, maybe six months ago, that they did not want to come back into the facility, that they were looking for other places for the chamber. And the senior center, we had already been developing plans for the future of this. Gosh, where do we start, back in 2017, Mike, that we were looking at? Because the building was old and tired and we knew we needed to do something. So plans have been in the works. So when the senior center moved into that facility, we let them know, this is short term. This is not your temporary, your permanent home. Justin, you know, when we're ready to renovate this, you may not be a part of this. And they totally understood. And they in fact now, I believe, I just heard that they purchased another facility and they're moving forward.
They're moving in. Yeah, they're, they're moving in across from Taylor's made right.
So the answer to your question is many, but not all, Dave. And the, the chamber is kind of the big one. And, and the senior citizen center was only a temporary move anyway.
But the intended way will be there.
Last week, when we got some more details on these recovery funds and we looked at it with tourism, Nan and I discussed the, the fact that part of those dollars might be able to be used for this if that's the way the board decides to do it. Nan also told me that you've got some deadlines to, to meet here and we won't be able to get any answers on these recovery act dollars before your first deadline. Nan, could you give us an update on that date, that timeline, please?
That was exactly what I was going to ask, is what the timeline of this is and needing these funds.
July 14th. Well, we don't need the funds, but we need the commitment.
A commitment, okay.
So if we can have a commitment from the county for X amount of dollars by July 14th, we can move forward with this grant.
We are, we are in a position where we are now ready to release for bidding for the first phases of work to be done. And we're holding on that right now until we get a little clearer picture of this funding. So we're ready, but we understand, you know, we have to work with the calendar.
Did you say July 14th or 17th?
14th.
14th, okay.
And so that, that date is tied to the CAT grant application. So the Community Attraction and Development Grant Application, which is the request before the county. That's a deadline for the CAT grant application.
And do you need matching for that 850?
No.
No.
We need a gift.
You need a gift, okay. Our big thing on these ARPA funds is we weren't going to do any spending until July. We wanted to just have our first meeting, which is something I'm going to discuss in a few minutes. But we've got a meeting on July 5th that we could get that group back together and we've kind of got a committee for spending these funds. And, but we didn't want to make any commitments, so in July is okay.
So you guys have done community attraction and tourism development grants before. You understand that really without city or county involved.
It doesn't happen. The grant does not.
To have some type of commitment.
And how much is that CAT grant? Is that the 850?
That's the 850.
Okay.
That's the maximum that we could get. You know, it's not guaranteed that they're going to give it to us.
It's based on the dimensions and the scope of the project, what we're doing.
Do you have any feeling on how long before you get an answer on the CAT? before you get an answer on the CAT grant?
It depends on if they need additional information from, but I would think we would know something in August, by the end of August.
Oh, really? That's, I was, even three months isn't terrible.
Yeah. I would think there, it depends on, you know, how many questions they have about it. But once the application is submitted, usually it, it goes before their board and they're able to act pretty quickly or ask for additional information. So I would think by the end of August, we would have some indication.
Okay.
But we may, we may have to go back with more information.
Okay, okay.
We only have this on our agenda this morning for a discussion item. I wouldn't mind having this put on our next agenda. Nan, if you can get our information between now and then to explore the options of being able to finance some funds from the American Recovery Act to be able to apply towards this. So it's not on the backs of the taxpayers. Obviously with our current budget, it is set. We don't have the availability of funding to be able to do any amendments and take from there. We feel for these guys. We know exactly what it's like to be going through a major renovation on a building and having substantive discussions with the insurance companies and how enjoyable those are. How, how do my fellow supervisors feel on this for putting it on our next agenda and pursuing our, our, exploring our options for finance?
I agree completely, Dave, absolutely, yeah.
250?
250,000. So it sounds like, I mean, we have to submit the grant, I believe, by July 15th.
Right, we meet on July 5th.
Okay.
So we can, we'll know on that date.
Okay, so you would be able to provide us with a, a letter of support? Again, you, money doesn't have to be there.
Letter of support, that's.
Six.
Is it the sixth? Yeah, well, I'm, yes, I'm sorry, it's the sixth. It's the sixth. The fifth is our.
I would say if we do a letter of support, it would be contingent upon you receiving the grant.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming.
Here's architectural renditions of the interior for you. There's three of those and you can get the other one to Dave with his other information.
And there's a couple of those that were in the paper, but there's also a couple of those that are hot off the press that I just got from our architect. So there are a couple of new ones beyond what was in the newspaper.
Well, thank you for your time and your presentation today. This is an important community and, and asset to our, our county. And we will pursue the exploration of options to see how we can help.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want, did you?
Yeah, we got one of those.
Thank you very much.
I'll take, I'll take yours.
Any other comments or questions from anybody before these folks leave?
Well, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Jarrett, can you walk him? You have to be supposed to wave him. Jarrett, we'll bring him back.
Yeah, bye.
Thank you, here. And I think your hat's back there. All right, and Jarrett will walk you guys down, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number 18 on our agenda this morning. This was tabled on 6/22/2021, a janitorial contract. I believe Paul has some further information on this. And if somebody wants to make a motion to remove this from the table, I'll entertain motions.
I would, so move. A second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the table item for discussion and possible action. Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Blasey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Moving on to item B and number 18 is the approval of a janitorial contract agreement at 101 East Church Street with Kelly Tompkins. Renewable one-year contract at $400 per month. I'll entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the janitorial agreement 101 East Church Street with Kelly Tompkins, renewable one-year contract at $400 per month. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the janitorial agreement. Discussion, comment?
We, we basically, we reduced it to two days, two, you know, two times a week cleaning and the cost down to 400 as, as requested by, by Steve. And I also had this agreement would, is, would be set to start on the 1st of July 2021, so that we would be able to resume our, our cleaning services after the, after the 1st of the month. The, you know, payments are due on the 1st of the following month that you service, so the first payment wouldn't be until August 1st. So it's not, you know, no problem getting it started on July 1st. Did take out any of the duties from a previous agreement that had to do with outdoor vegetation, because Hank used to trim our, our shrubbery up front and used to do little weed work. We don't need to have that in the janitorial agreement.
I would like to look at this again in a year and make sure this is acceptable with your folks.
And we, and we can bring it back to talk if, if we think that it's not enough or if there's, you know, we've got a lot of people in the office that can say, hey, this just isn't quite there yet, you know, or they can say, this is just fine.
Okay.
And that's what we'll be looking.
Let's, we'll give it a try.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on this matter? We have a motion and a second on the table to approve the janitorial agreement at 101 East Church Street with Kelly Tompkins, Tompkins, renewable one-year contract at $400 per month. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Blasey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Yes. Here's the, here's the signed copies from Kelly.
Moving on on our agenda this morning, this was an item that was tabled on 6/22/2021, Masonic Building Lease. I know Bill has been working on this. Bill, do you want to bring this back off the table or are we still in the process?
We haven't received the actual contract from the Masonic Building Group. But I was, I was told by, on the telephone in, in my conversation with Jim Hunt, and I think Jim's the new president of this, of this organization there. And he says, not a problem, we'll take care of this. And so at, at this point, I think we need to just leave it on the table. And when we get this information, we'll bring it back off and, and approve it at that point.
Okay. We will leave that as tabled item. Moving on to number 20, which was a tabled item also, the Raycom lease for Collins and Iowa Towers until the final draft was available. Has that been completed?
No, that's probably out, I'd say, at least 11, 10, 11 months. And the reason it got on the agenda is because they had that 2021 date on there. It's actually effective July 1 of 2022.
Got us all excited.
It got us all excited. And so that's what made it on there. But this is really something that's going to be out of ways. So I don't know if we leave it on the table, how we remember to bring it off the table, that type of thing, if we don't leave it on, so.
Well, when, when the next draft, it'll be time.
It'll be time. So can this drop off the agenda then? Until we?
Well, the way we have it, no. It's on there for perpetuity unless we do something.
Okay. I just know in the past, we've just taken things off the agenda until they were brought up later. So this will be on there by till?
Yeah.
Next June. But we can easily skip things so that we don't, we know we don't have to do.
Yep, that'll be fine. Moving on to item 21 on our agenda this morning is a public forum. This is a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Anybody got some public comments this morning?
I do this morning. You know, I know you're all tired of listening to me, but these are all pretty quick. We did have our first ARPA meeting last Friday on the 18th. We've got a nice, I think we've got representation from nearly every department attending. I'm going to get this group together next week so that we can discuss the 250. Because what we kind of said is we'd, this group would bring a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on spending. So we will get that done so that we have that ready for that July 6th meeting. We, we had planned another meeting, I think it was July 23rd. There's some additional clarifications and things that are supposed to be coming out later in July. The speed with which all this information's been coming out has been slow at best, but it keeps trickling out. So we'll just keep getting smarter. We've got two or three, we've got three items now. This would be the third, but I know 100% these funds meet that. And, and they're not things that we have to use on lost revenue. They meet the criteria to be utilized from these funds.
That's, that'd be the only, the biggest concern.
Right, and the other two total about $82,000. It's pretty small. But for this one, with the city doing the 250, you know, we can discuss it with that group to bring a recommendation to you all. But it always seems nice to just do what the city does and make it an equal. So I don't know if you all have a different amount.
Sometimes.
Right, but if you all have a different amount, that in this particular case.
I haven't even thought about it. Because I wanted, I wanted to make sure this was going to fly first, yeah.
So think on that and let Steve know, because he's the board member on the committee. The other two items I had.
Chew on you?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other two items I have is due to the July 5th holiday. The claims for the 6th will be due June 30th by 1:00 p.m. And I will send a reminder out for our county department heads. The other piece I had is there is a empower rural Iowa broadband, some information that I've been seeing come in. And I think the board has gotten that as well. And I don't know if we need to start investigating what those funds, kind of sounds like grant-type funding, but if we need to research that for our county for broadband.
See, they came and talked to us here six months ago and they wanted money. And so when I look at this, I, I skim it pretty fast because we weren't sure that's what we wanted to do.
That was just for a study, if I.
That was for a study. Now they've done the study and they're to the grant phase now. So I think there's $1 million, if I remember right, of how much is out there for that. So just something that if you all hear of anything or see any training or information on that. Oh, I lied, it's 97 million. That's a really big number.
Best for the whole state.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Just a suggestion for your committee, so we kind of keep a little continuity in things that we contribute funds for. In the past, we've kind of gone by population, broke it down. And I'll give you an example. When we used to share the 911 expenses with the city, they paid 60, 67% and we paid 33% based upon individuals that were inside of the incorporated areas and outside of them. Keep, have your, have your committee keep in mind that we represent the individuals in both in the city and outside, but we're responsible for things outside. The city is already making a commitment for the individuals that were within the city of Marshalltown. And we should make a commitment based upon the individuals that are outside the city. Because they will also use this facility.
Okay, that's a great suggestion.
It, it might help you with your ability to come up with a, a.
A number.
That you can put a ma, a mathematic formula.
Absolutely, okay.
Anything else under public forum today?
Yeah, I was going to give an update from the tax sale yesterday. As you know, it was two years' worth of taxes because we didn't have a tax sale last year. So we offered 471 parcels totaling $696,000. Of all the taxes that were purchased yesterday was 611,000. When I saw that number, that we had $85,000 left remaining out there, I thought, well, that's a lot larger than usual. Well, when you have double the amount of mobile homes, which no one ever purchases those from tax, so that's 28,000. One of the parcels had a $37,000, $38,000 demolition nuisance on it. So that's a city special assessment. Another parcel had a $5,000 fire on it. So you subtract all those out, that got us back down to about $14,000 remaining unpaid taxes, which is right in line with what we about our most years. So all in all, it's a good sale. We had 1,700, almost 1,800 bidders for just those 471 parcels. So it went very successful. And you just never know when you're doing something completely new. Two years under, under one, one tax sale. You know, control some things off the code and stuff. So we had some different preparation work. We had to do it, it was a little bit different and get our programming down right. But it went well. And, and the main part is our entities are getting all the money, county, schools, cities, townships, et cetera, so.
Any other comments by anyone?
Can I mention something about the CAT grant application deadlines? You hear that, Dave?
I hear you, Nan.
Try it again, Mark, could you repeat that?
Can I mention something about the CAT grant application deadlines?
Absolutely.
So according to the frequently asked questions published at the City Council Agenda on Monday, the 14th, there are several CAT grant application deadlines per year, January, April, July, and August, all the 15th. And they repeat annually. So if you can't make the 15th of July, there's always the 15th of October.
Okay, good to know.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Anything else by anybody? There being no other public forum, we're moving on to item 22 on our agenda this morning, which is adjournment. The next Redrigger session is July 6th, 2021 at 9:05 a.m. All business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the County Auditoria Recorder's Office or the Board of Supervisors Office by Wednesday, June 30th, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. There being no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned at 10:34 a.m.